I call this town council meeting on August 10th, 2021. To what? Goodness, to order, yes.
You good?
Brenda up there.
She needs to be, at least needs to be.
I need your quarter.
Oh, I guess that should help.
Just. Who are you? You sitting there? I'm allowed to.
Files, right? Okay.
Recording in progress.
All right, if we can stand for the question, one more time.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. It's us to number four, proclamations and presentations, we have none. Number five, public petition, petitions, I can't speak to communication and public participation on any subject within the jurisdiction of the town council with a two-minute limit. If you are on, please raise your hand and state your name. If you're on the phone, it's star nine. Anybody? Is anyone? No. The participants. Yep. All right. We have no public hearing items tonight. Seven A reports of boards and commissions responsible to the council. Brenda?
Sure. So Talon Tourism, their last meeting was canceled. The state is still experiencing an increase in some areas of tourism throughout the summer. Venues are starting to require masks and vaccines. So please make sure that you are aware of what the policies are before you go visit any venues. Um. The next item is for sustainable CT. We've been having weekly or every other weekly meetings with some fellows with sustainable CT. We failed to try to convince them to cover a little bit more of the want it property. It is a hard ask, you know, whatever we asked for the coverage for that one on one matching program. Once we hit what we've asked for, we couldn't ask for anymore, even though we were continuing to raise money. But I heard there was other good news that I'm sure someone will share later in the meeting. We are taking a look at creating a survey for businesses, possibly residents, for how they receive communications from the town. If they're receiving what they want, if they don't want to receive communications from the town. And we're going to help evaluate that, make sure that for the people that do want to receive information, that they're receiving it in a timely manner and where they're at. We also started working with Bloomfields, the town of Bloomfields. We're going to be partnering, partnering with them and other towns to take a look at creating some events on sustainability. These events wouldn't start till next year because, you know, we have to plan. We bounced around a lot of ideas. We're not settling on any of these, but some of the ideas we talked about is some equity training events for residents, some information about what equity is, taking a look at best practices that are within each of our towns for our departments and how to share them. Cause we understand that many municipalities are short-staffed. And if we can share best practices to save some time and money, it's a good thing all around. We also took a look at maybe doing something about humans of each town, you know? I believe many of you are familiar with like the humans of New York that happened on social media. I don't know, it was almost 10 years ago, I think it started where they would take pictures of a resident and do a small two to three minute interview with them so you can learn a little bit more about them. We thought that some of these would be really great, especially pairing with Bloomfields because our two towns are pretty opposite in, in many ways. So we thought it would help us learn a little bit about our neighbors, other residents in Connecticut and share our experiences. So that's it for the two of those.
Thank you. All right, that gets us to seven D, reports of town council liaisons. I'm gonna start with you, Lou.
Thank you, Madam Chair, that the Bush School Building Committee did have a regular meeting last week on the third that we discussed a few other additional change orders that as of last week, and of course, we had a meeting, we were having a meeting right now, a special meeting where there'll be additional purchase orders and additional things being discussed that are, the owner's contingency as of last week was at eighty-six thousand, four hundred and eighty-six dollars and forty-four cents. So that means that that's how much that we have as far as leeway on the owner's side. On the construction manager's contingency, that they were just over twenty-five thousand dollars, the twenty-five thousand, four sixty-nine, forty. So that we're again, combined total is inaccessible, a hundred thousand dollars. Again, so a little too close for some of the other, for myself and some of the other members of the committee, but that we're still sound enough where that we're not in panic mode at this point. That um, some of the purposes orders that went through and some of the change orders, I included a, that we had to do a change order for kitchen health inspection, which came out of the construction manager's contingency, as well as caulking around some of the windows and other, other changes that we've done over the past several weeks that we discussed future change orders. Again, the one thing that we did discuss, which is a sort of looming large, is the issue of the, the playground where again, we passed it two weeks ago or three weeks ago, passed a change order to allow the prep work to be done for where the playground is supposed to be or where we're planning it. But the issue of actually having the, the playground constructed through this contract and part of, as part of a change order or at a later point through the, through the recommended construction company that the state has already authorized, saying that they'd be willing to work with and have them do the work. So we're waiting to see, the timing is really of the essence because none of us want to make any additional change orders without knowing for sure that there's not going to be any other or bigger purchases that need to be done that were somewhat unforeseen. So, but I think that given what we have right now and the anticipated cost of the playground, approximately forty thousand dollars, that there's a, a good chance that that'll be constructed under the same contract, but that's something that we're discussing that we'll need to make the decision on soon enough. Grand opening, I believe was set down for September 25th is the date that we're going to, or September 11th, eighteenth, I'm sorry. Yeah, it changed, it changed several times, so I'm trying to keep track of it. September 18th is when we're going to have the official grand opening on, on the school and the whole ceremony. So I hope you could start marking your calendars on that. Oh, that's all I have at this point, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you. John?
WPC did not meet since our last meeting, so nothing to report to that.
Okay. Brenda?
Thank you, Brenda Flussy here. So planning and zoning met last night. The largest item on their agenda was accessory dwelling units. I'm really excited about this because it brings much more equity into housing and a lot, a lot of options for housing for our residents. Maybe someone who wants to retire to have an accessory dwelling unit on their property, or they have a young professional that just graduated from college or, you know, a rental unit. So it's, it's pretty exciting to see these changes come, come forward. If you guys wanted to review what the restrictions are, are going, or what the allowances are going to be for that, they're in the packets and they're going to be having a public hearing on that. Blights, there's been no meeting, historical district is meeting next Wednesday, the 18th. And that is it.
Thank you. Kurt? Did Kurt on?
Yeah, he was.
Did we get Boogie? All right, well, we'll come back to Kurt then. Probably bump it back on. Steve?
All right, Steve Jones, no meeting between, but just to announce August 12th, there's a town commission meeting, they'll be discussing a possible property donation on Cook Road, which is near Crystal Peak and Palmer's Tango Lot of Property. As a part, I think what Brenda, who the councilor Flussy alluded to, there is a thousand dollar grant that was awarded by the AARP to the conservation commission or to the, to the wanted property. And there'll be continued discussions with that, as well as updates on the attached property and even, even no property for future trail access. And then on the 16th, we, a water commission meeting.
The Cook Road property, is that new property?
Yes, new properties, 122 and 123. And I was looking at it before the meeting, it didn't seem to directly connect to the areas. I'm curious what the intent is, but hopefully learn more on Thursday.
Excuse me, Steve, it's pretty hard to hear you. I think there might be some other conversations going on in the background or movement, but it was hard to hear what that last section was.
Try and project a little bit louder. Now, I was just saying that I, why I checked out 123, 122 Cook Road and I wasn't sure about why it was being considered for donation. It's not attached to any of the other properties, but hopefully I'll learn more at the next meeting.
Okay, Kurt?
Can you hear me all right? Yes? No? Okay. Okay, no, I took it. Sorry. Yeah, my, I'm on my phone, my internet went out. So we'll do this real quick. I was unable to make my little partial recreation meeting last night, so for each minute. So I, I have nothing to report.
Okey dokey. All right, then that gets us to the new business. Eight dot one, appointment of a member of the town. Um, go ahead, Lisa.
The Republicans have identified William Bodie III to replace the vacant town council position that was through the resignation of Sophia Johnson. And we have our town clerk, Kathy Pagan, here this evening to swear him in once you approve it.
All right, ahead. All righty, is he coming up on the screen? Yeah. Bill, you want to unmute yourself? Say a word so you pop up on screen.
Hold, hold on, you still have to, your resolution before she give.
Yeah, no, I know, just want him to pop up.
Okay.
All right, so Steve Jones, I make a re, a motion that be resolved by Talon Town Council that hereby points William Bodie III as a council member approved by Talon Council on August 10th, 2021.
Lulu, I'll second that motion.
Any discussion?
I'll just say, welcome aboard, glad to have you and best of luck.
Thank you.
All right, all those in favor? Lou?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
Steve?
Steve?
Aye.
Aye, so that is near unanimous. Thank you very much. Kathy, all yours.
Okay, Mr. Bodie, if you want to say something to pop up on the screen for me.
I'm right here, am I popping up?
Anywhere. Please raise your right hand for me. Do you solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Connecticut, as well as the Charter and ordinances of the town of Talon, and to faithfully discharge your duties as a member of the Talon Town, Town Council to the best of your abilities, so help you God?
I will.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome, Bill. You are now officially a voting member, so you get to go forward on all these things that we have now. All right, so that gets us to eight dot two, consideration of a resolution for an extension of the due date. Thank you, Kathy, for the payment in lieu of taxes for the access housing at Parker Place 100 Old Post Road.
Okay, this evening, we have Peter Di Biassi with us from the Access Agency, as well as I think he has some other of his staff along with him. And they have required that the town council gives some consideration to extending the lease requirement for them to begin to pay their in lieu of tax payment due to some financial restrictions and difficulties due to the COVID pandemic. The, the lease required us to begin charging about twelve dollars a unit for every rented unit with a three percent increase effective in January. The total loss of revenue had if we, if you should move forward in, in allowing them to delay it for one year is about fifty-four hundred and fifty dollars. I, I do have Peter here this evening, so he can chat with you and discuss their concerns and for your consideration, if you decide to move forward, may do so.
Okay, I'm sorry, Lisa, you said it's fifty-four hundred dollars?
Fifty-four forty-eight, to be exact.
And that's what we would have expected for this year.
Right, that would have been beginning in October for the couple, few months there. And then there would have been a three percent increase in January. So the grand total for a 12-month period would be about fifty-four forty-eight. That they, there is a letter included in your packet where they weren't rented out in the beginning of the year due to a lot of the COVID and it slowed things down. But now they're pretty close to being full capacity. And I think I'd rather let him speak to it.
Okay.
So let me see if I can find him here.
I'm right, I'm right here, hopefully you can hear me. I do have, do have my video on, I thank you very much for considering this request. I am, as noted earlier and pronounced very nicely, Peter Di Biassi. I'm the CEO at Access Community Action Agency. We are the sponsor, the general partner at Access Housing in Parker Place, which is the senior housing development that was put in place at the former Parker School. And just by coincidence, we have Parker Stevens on the line from Access, suicide director of finance and, and information systems. We did not name the project after him, but everybody else in the agency now wants, wants the housing development named after their first name, so we're going to have to see what we can do about that. We got the certificate occupancy for this project in 2019. It was anticipated that the, the units would be fully leased up after about a year and that we would start paying this pilot a year after that. Unfortunately, due to COVID, we are a year behind basically on the lease up process. We were largely leased up this past spring. Again, a year later than anticipated, we are at thirty-six of thirty-seven units leased. We expect to have the thirty-seventh unit leased September 1st, which would give us a hundred percent occupancy. We have had to put significant funding into this project. One of the things we received as the sponsor or the developer of the project is a developer fee. We have invested that entire development fee back into the project and we're at about twenty-five thousand dollars to the negative overall. And so we're requesting, since the lease up came a year late, we would like to push back the pilot for another year. In this current environment, that would be very helpful to the finances of the project. We know that there would be a loss of revenue to the town. We also know that towns have received a fairly generous contribution or allocation of the federal government through ARPA. I don't know if the town can use some of those funds perhaps as a plant these dollars if you grant us the waiver of the additional year. I do have Parker on in case there's any specific financial questions about the project. But it's been a great partnership and it took us 12 years to get this to this point or more. We started our first conversations on this way back in, in 2008, 2009. So I think that's the basic information I wanted to share with you. And I want to say, I'm also very impressed with the backup materials you all provided as part of the agenda package. Very professional and very thorough and I compliment you on that. Good, good work.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so Lisa, he brought up a good, a good question. Is this something that you could use ARPA funds for?
I, I would have to check. I'm such a small amount.
Yes, yeah.
It's, it's, I didn't even budget this year, just in case.
Okay. So it's not going to take it, we won't take any hit on the budget for it. Okay, does anybody have any questions for Lisa? Brenda?
Yeah, thank you, Brenda Flussy here. It, it is still pretty hard to hear you all. I, it seems that there's some sort of background noise that's interfering. It's not, it's not verbal, I don't know what it is. But a lot of times you guys are, your voice is cutting out and alls I hear is crinkling. And I got a couple texts from people who are also experiencing the same. So I just want you to be aware of that. Now, one of the things that some of the towns are using the ARPA funds for are allowing grants to things like 501(c)(3)'s and small businesses and stuff. So there is precedent in other towns in the state to do things like this to help be partners. And I think being a partner with Parker Place is absolutely perfect, a lot of alliteration there. But I, I think it's appropriate to, to go ahead with their request and take a look at possibly looking at other places where we can partner and help businesses and nonprofits in the town by using the ARP funds. Thank you.
Hello?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you hear me now, Miss Lucy? Is that, is that better? All right. Just one question I have and it's coming from a, just looking at specifically at the request that was filed. They requested a, a pause or a continuance or, you know, deferment of the interest or the, the payment for this year. But it didn't mention anything about the interest. So the question is that, I'm not trying to push this issue, but as coming from a legal standpoint of it, is this something that they, that they're also looking for deferment of the three percent interest for this year? Or is it something that would be six percent next year, since it would be three percent that would accrue three percent next year? And then going three percent forward from that point forward on? Just because I'm just, you know, looking at that, I want to make sure that we're clear on it so that it doesn't come back at a later point in time where somebody, you know, it's claimed that, well, they actually owe a six percent and they're not prepared for that. So that's something I think that we need to, to consider.
You, you could, do you mind?
No, go ahead.
You could certainly, if you decide to move forward with this this evening or in the future, you could certainly put that into the resolution to state that although we're delaying the startup of one year, the new rate effective for the following year would already includes, include the three percent. We'd have to find a way to phrase that. But you, you could say that, so then, and then in January of 2023, it would go up another three percent at that point. The way, the way this contract was written or this lease was that they have the effective date for increase in January rather than on our fiscal year. So it's kind of half and half. So they'll be at three percent, the 1.03 extra in September, and then they'd go up another three percent in January. So they would be at the higher rate like you're suggesting.
And it's not something that, that I'm pushing, it's just something, I just want to make sure that it's clear and that we, that we, that we discuss it. So if it is a resolution that we want to say we're deferring everything, the payment as well as the accrual of interest until next year, that we make it clear in the resolution, make it clear on the record rather than saying, okay, we're just, you know, deferring the payment, but then the interest is still accruing. So just to make sure that we're clear on it. Thank you, Madam Chair, that's all I have.
Thank you, that was, that was going to be sort of kind of what my question was is, no, we have a, a pretty detailed contract with them. So are we suggesting then that we bump the year out by one and pick it up on the end? Or are we saying that we're going to just waive it for year one? And then that year would, we're just going to go right into year two? Cause I know at some point it goes up from twelve dollars to.
Right, that, in, in January, it'll go up that three percent.
Yeah.
We're talking about. So the original recommendation was, I, I see Peter has a question.
Peter?
Should we let him? Thank you. Can y'all hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, so, so the, I think the initial question that was just raised is what was our request? And our request really is to delay the start of payment for a year and then that feature of the lease would kick in. So our, our request was to, to move the twelve dollar per unit payment to start in October of next year, 2022. And then the three percent would kick in as of January 1. Obviously, it's up to you all to decide, but I wanted to make it clear that that was our request was to really delay the beginning of payments until next year. And then the first three percent increase would come January 1 of 2023.
So I guess that's different then, because then we're talking about changing the con, the contract that we have. Cause the contract that we have had an ending date of.
Right, so, you know, you may even have to have the town attorney make some revisions if that were the case, where it would be, if you did not do that and just let it go through, I would assume that you can waive the fee, just as you do with other.
We would be fine with that, that, that might just be the, the passive lease resistance to get this done and we would certainly be, we would still be very thankful for that delay.
I would maintain the contract as it already is.
Yeah, that makes, that makes good sense from our perspective, I think.
Right, cause otherwise we have to bring in a lawyer and change the whole contract and change the end date and everything else. So I think for the amount of money that we're talking about, the proposal to waive five thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars, or Lisa, what you end up deciding that it is, the twelve dollars, whatever, that piece of it, then that would probably be the easier path, I would think, to do.
Yeah, we, we, I, I would agree.
Right, and it, and it would be through September through, first through October 1st, I think.
September 1st through August 31st?
Or August, I'm sorry, August 31st. You in agreement with that, Peter?
We were, we were hoping it would start October 1st, which would have been a year from when this one started. But again, September 1st, we're, we're, we'd be grateful for whatever relief we can get here.
You know what, I could be wrong on the dates, so just check something real quick here.
Peter, are you a 501(c)(3)?
We certainly are, yes. Yeah, we've been around since 1965. And we are 501(c)(3) Community Action Agency. A, a private nonprofit governed by a board of, board of directors.
It is September 30th.
Okay. All right. Anybody else have any other questions? Anything else?
How's the motion have to change or does the intent of our conversation cover what was discussed for the draft resolution?
I would change the resolution to say from October 2021 through September 30th, 2022.
Okay. All right. That be resolved by Talon Town Council that agrees to allow access housing at Parker Place 100 Old Post Room to extend the due date for the payment in lieu of taxes for one year from October 1st, 2021 to September 30th, 2022?
Please, I second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Lou?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Brenda?
Aye.
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 Steve?
Aye.
I'm an I, that is unanimous, thank you much. Thank you, Peter.
Well, thank you all very much, we appreciate it. This has been a tremendous partnership, town's been great throughout. We're glad we could repurpose this, this asset for good use. And I think the seniors are very much appreciating it. So I appreciate everything you, you all are doing and, and I want to just thank you for your willingness to step up and take leadership during very difficult times. So thank you all for your service in that regard, appreciate it.
Other seniors that I've spoken to are definitely enjoying it there and congratulations on finally getting all of the units rented.
Great.
All right, that gets us eight dot three, discussion, three-year check-in on the Education Reserve Fund Ordinance, Chapter Eight.
This is in regard, the town council adopted ordinance in, on August 27, 2013. It was amended again in 2018 when we did the three-year review back then. The ordinance that allows the Board of request if there are any remaining funds at the end of the fiscal year, up to one percent of their budget if they should have so much left over. up to 1% of their budget if they should have so much left over to put it into a separate education reserve fund. And then that fund has stipulations that allow them to purchase it for purchase of using it for capital, technology, or unanticipated special education needs that come up throughout the year. The policy requires the town council and Board of Education to review it every three years. And that's why we're bringing it to you tonight. The, in November of '21, that's approaching our three-year mark. So the town manager, the previous town manager and the superintendent of schools did meet and discuss the ordinance. They are not, neither one of them recommended any changes at this time. And so this is an agenda item basically to check in if there's any changes that you want discussed. We can go back with that, or you can just say, we're good.
Okay. All right. Does anybody have any items, anything that they would like to discuss on this before we decide? Lou?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The only question I have would be under the section 8, 8 dash, or 8.4, the use of monies committed to the fund balance account. Then, now, would this be able to encumber a recurring account, like a recurring expense? Such as a staff payment or, like, you know, hiring a person? Or is this a basically a one-time expense where these are the funds will be used for a certain issue, like buying, as you said, buying computers or books or other things, or paying for expenses related to a special education? But nothing that would be like a regular contractual recurring expense after that?
That is correct. It's mainly for capital items, usually a one-time type of capital item. And I'll certainly, if you'd like Walter to, Dr. Willetts, excuse me, to collaborate. He, he's here this evening if you need him. But it's more for the one-time things. Now, there may be in this depending on what happens throughout the year. There may be a teacher in there, but it's not to fund them ongoing year after year. Be a situation where they haven't, they haven't had to use it so far for special education needs. But there are occasions where that could occur when the state funding doesn't match what they had budgeted. And they could be in a severe situation. So it's there to allow for that emergency.
All right. Thank you. That, that's officially answered. I don't know, Dr. Willetts, if there's anything that you'd like to add to that or, or not, or?
No, I, I think the, the fund is working as designed. It's working, working well. So when the previous town manager and I spoke about it, we didn't feel there were any needs, any needed changes at this time. The Finance and Facilities Committee or Subcommittee of the Board of Ed also reviewed it. It feels like it's working well at this time as, as written. So there's no recommended changes on the board side for this. And we'll be reviewing it on the board side tomorrow. So this is check the box for you tonight. If you check it tomorrow, you think it's working very well.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I have no further questions.
All right. I don't have any questions either. So I think at this time, the yeah, I would say just what is, what is the question on this?
There, there isn't one?
There isn't one. So I would say at this time, we would just go forward with, we did the check-in. Nobody desires any requests or changes at this act time. So it's good for the next three years.
We can note that in the policy.
Perfect. Then you updated what the last reviewed date on it. All right. That gets us to 8.4. Consideration of a resolution for a supplemental appropriation of $49,076 from the equity distribution for KERMA to use by the town and Board of Education. The town share would appropriate the funds in the amount of $22,688. So the capital improvement fund for environmental and other testing project account Thank you for putting all that in there, Lisa. The Board of Education share, the amount of $26,388 would be appropriated to the capital improvement fund for Birch Grove Non-Grant Account You bring it, I said it all.
Each, each year, we have been very fortunate to receive a distribution of the members' equity from the KERMA Board of Directors from the KERMA Fund. And it's sure of excess equity that they give back to their members. Mike Wilkinson is also here, obviously, this evening, and he also is involved in the process. So what we have done each year is to come to council and usually put it towards one-time type expenses generally in the capital fund. And here, we have put it towards different testing. We have probably foundation testing, things like that, that we do. And the Board of Education, where we put it last year and probably this year, just to make sure that we have funds available in case the state does not approve any part of the grant, at least there'll be some excess funds there to help assist with a shortfall in grant proceeds if that should come into play. We have used that in the past to, to help with that. So what we're asking for tonight is just the, the appropriation resolution. No public meeting is required because we still fall under the threshold of the town charter. It would just, a resolution to approve the funding.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions or discussion on this? Happens every week, so.
Just one quick question regarding the Birch Grove School Non-Grant Account. So in the event that it's allocated and it doesn't, it isn't used, would it have to be come back to the council to be appointed to another account? Or would it get folded into another capital improvement fund for the Board of Education?
More, more than likely, it would just be moved into another capital fund if there is something open that needed the funds. Otherwise, the town council would have, if it's a new project, the town council would have to reappropriate it to a new project.
Okay. Thank you. That's it for me.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, it's just sort of spitting off with what Mr. Jones asked for the Capital Improvement Fund, Birch Grove. So is this something that would that it would only last during the dependency of the construction? Or is this something that would continue on while, like, you know, as, as an expense line, capital improvement line for Birch Grove?
It would be more related to the project. So obvious, after the construction is complete, within a couple of weeks, there's, there's still going to be, yes, there's still going to be some ongoing expenditures for furniture, things like that, and other technology needs. So certainly the funds could be used towards those items once we get the grant finalized. So the grant could take at least a year to be audited. So we would want to try to maintain some of those funds if, if we get some preliminary information from the state of Connecticut stating that, well, now, even though we're originally said we were going to give you 41 million or whatever the number was, I don't have it off the top of my head, when I were only going to give you 40 million 950, something like that. So, so now that extra, those extra funds could be used to assist with that. Also, they could be used for things. If, if it wasn't going to be used for that, we could always, you know, could issue debt. We do have the authority to do that. And the funds could be used for things that are not covered under the grant at all. Say, for a good example, is that you allocated funds for the school police off, security guard during the project. Those were things that the state would not cover under the original grant. So that was something we purchased out of there. So there, there's different things that you would be able to purchase as, as long as the state was not going to fund it by the grant.
Okay. That answered my question. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Anybody else? No? All right.
All right. Steve, don't make a motion that be resolved by the town council that hereby appropriates $49,076 from equity distribution from KERMA to use by the town in the amount of $22,688 capital group fund for environmental and other testing project amount And to the Board of Education in the amount of $26,388 would be appropriated to the capital improvement fund for Birch Grove School Non-Grant Account Approved by the town council on August 10th, 2021.
Lou will second.
Any discussion? All those
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Kurt?
Hi. Hi.
Brenda? If you're waiting for an "I" from me, I say "I." There's a lot of dead air there.
Steve?
Hi.
I'm an I, but it's unanimous. Thank you very much. All right. Now we get to 8.5, which is appointments to vacancies on municipal boards and commissions. And before we get there, I would just like to preemptively say thank you to everybody who's volunteering. But looking over this list again, we have over 20 vacancies on, gosh, like about at least 20 boards. So not terrible. But if anybody knows anybody who would like to do pretty much any of the boards that we have on here, there are at, at least one vacancy or alternate available on almost all of them. So, Summer?
I was just gonna add, we do have a few pending. We did get one in today for the mental health task force. And we also had, I think at least two or three for the Veterans Recognition Commission. I think those were in waiting for their next public meeting so that those individuals could be reviewed as vets, I think in the DD214, making sure that they are actually veterans at this point and then attending one of their meetings. So we do have a handful that will be down the pipeline for a future meeting.
That would take care of both of those things. There's only one on the mental health and two on the veterans, so that would be perfect.
All right. This is another discussion. I make a motion to approve the reappointments for the Commission on People with Disabilities, Robert Blenker and Susan Lechek Hughes for a term 8/1/2021 to 8/1/2024.
Lou will second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Lou?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Kurt?
Hi.
Lou?
Hi.
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
I'm an I. So it's unanimous. Thank you.
All right. And then I would make a motion to approve the new appointments. Lisa Hancock to the Eastern Health Acquisition Advisory Committee for Health District to be a term in 2024. And the land acquisition is a life term. And in addition, I would include in that motion to appoint Erin Stavens to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term of 11, 12, 19 to 11, 9, 21. I think I may have seen them on the camera in case someone had to say anything, but
Yes. Erin, Erin, would you like to say anything?
Hi. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. And I'm looking forward to the next planning and zoning meeting.
Perfect. Well, glad to have you. Thank you very much.
And I think Brenda may have had their hand up or they may have said something.
Yeah, I didn't, um, I didn't know if the term on Erin's was supposed to say today or not, but you know what I mean? Because the others have today's date or the beginning of the month when the term was. And this, it, it, you know, the other, the gentleman, Mr. Skinner resigned as of yesterday or last week. So I didn't know what the, what the, what we were supposed to do about the dates on that. That's all.
Okay. I think we can just change the date to effective today, which is what?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. So I would recall that addition to the motion, I'd amend my motion for Erin Stavens to be effective August 10th, 2021 to, you remember, 9th, 2021.
Lou will second.
Okay. Any discussion? Lou?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Kurt?
Hi.
Hi.
I can't hear you, but I assumed you said my name. I.
Hi.
I'm an I. So that's unanimous. Thank you again. All right. That gets us to nine, old business, 9.1, which is discussion on the formation of a subcommittee to review and vet possible ARP fund use.
So okay, at our last meeting, there was a lot of discussion of so many different ideas of what to do with the ARPA funds. And now that we know that we have a little more time to make a decision, I think that'll be valuable in allowing you to make some informed, good decisions of how you'd like to move forward. You had mentioned that you had wanted to create a subcommittee of the town council. And in order to do that, you cannot really have more than three members of the town council, two or three members to, to look at this and, and create a subcommittee to bring back recommendations to the full council. The charter is a little bit tricky regarding interactions with council and staff members. But I think it's very important to have staff involved with this decision. Because certainly there's other things that you may come up with an idea, and there may be other things that you're not aware of that staff could certainly share. So I think what we can do is have staff involved with the process. I would more than likely be there, and that way they go through me. And I would say, yes, of course, you can chat with them, but I would be there. And you would need to have a formal agendas, taking minutes and all of that for, for your subcommittee, even though it's not a full meeting, council meeting type. So that, that is what I can offer you on that unless you have some other thoughts of how you'd like to proceed with this.
No, I think the last conversation we had, I thought, was, was good. I like the idea that being you and then whichever staff member needs to come in for whatever it is that has been raised. And we had talked about it being Steve and I to do that with you.
And there could be some staff that would be involved all the time.
Right.
Because they're involved in so many different things. I just, well, I, I don't know if Beverly would be interested about, just as an example, Beverly's involved with construction projects, school grants, school construction grants, school construction, there were the highway, the water commission. She's involved in all of that. And she's human services director as well. But, so there's so many different things. So you know, certainly you've known her, but she'd be a valuable asset. I haven't run it by her yet. But I'm just, I'm just giving you an idea. Some people may have a lot more of experience in, in a lot of areas that you might be considering. So we might have them involved in, in more of that.
I would think it would be left up to you to decide who needs to be brought in from a town level, depending on what's being thrown on the table and what feedback we would need in order to bring something forward to the council. So that would be my idea, my opinion at least on that. Brenda?
Yes, thank you. I, I'd like to consider having someone from the EDC on Economic Development Commission because, or at least make sure that they are asked about some ideas. You know, the ARP funds are being used in a lot of communities to help strengthen the community, help build the bonds, help you know, between community members and contributors to the communities, plus businesses, helping them make it through the pandemic, giving them grants for ways to get out of the end of the pandemic and take a look at what's going to be happening. You know, what our new normal looks like. So are we, you know, like if, for restaurants that want to build outside seating permanently, different things like that, that would add to the quality of life and add to the, you know, the wonderful town that we have by working in partnership with those businesses. Plus, the 501(c)(3)'s are the different nonprofits that we have in our community. You know, all of our museums lost revenue because they've been closed for a year. You know, and they, they need upkeep. And they need to invest in their programs, which is an investment in our town. So that's why I would recommend taking a look at the EDC, or maybe taking a look at getting some community members inputs or membership on this group. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa, I would say since the EDC reports to you now too, so obviously, we could bring them in for items depending.
My recommendation is, is to treat them just like the staff certainly have their input to talk about if you're, there's a certain time of evening or whatever, daytime, whenever you're meeting. Certainly to bring them in and we can arrange that.
Perfect. Steve, you got anything?
I was gonna add, I don't know, how difficult would it be to establish a dedicated email address? Or what would be the primary form of contact for if you want to invite these voices to provide input or thoughts or concerns about the use of the funds?
We could set up an email. I think it's something you might want to think about. It could be bombarded with all types of requests. Certainly, you want to hear the needs in the community. But the, the one thing we have to be very cautious of is not to create several little, little projects because we just don't have the staff to administer it. And the record keeping that would be involved, there's so many rules regarding state statutes, there's, it's a construction project, whatever. It would require prevailing wages and all sets of rules that go with all of that. So that would be the only caution you want. But certainly, I know you'd want to hear.
Yeah, I was trying to save you from making influx of emails because my alternative would be probably having the town managers email be the probably the point of information since you'd be working with all the town staff.
My box is filling up.
Yeah.
But we could do, we could, if that, if the committee so desires, that's how they wanted to move forward, that is something we could set up.
Okay.
Okay, so at this time, I would say what we're looking to say is that we want to form the subcommittee. And as I said last week, unless there's anything different, we, the last, last meeting, we talked about being the chair and the vice chair. And that would just kind of stay chair, vice chair regardless. Lou?
Yes, thank you, manager. You know, I would concur completely with that. I think that that's the best route to go is to have the chair, vice chair. That way, there's continuity all the way through. And then also have the, any of the town staff appointee, be appointed by Ms. Hancock or if it's down the road, whoever the full-time town manager would be, because they're the ones that would best be able to discern who, who should be in any meeting at any given time, given some of the proposals to address the issues, just like you would call them here at this meeting to address certain issues. I think that would be the same type of thing. So I would concur fully with the chair's proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. So Lisa, do we have to, do we focus in that? Okay, all right, so we don't, we have a resolution?
Of course, we don't have one.
We don't, right?
I think, I think.
Can you wing it?
I just say, I just say, Steve, I'll make a motion that we establish a subcommittee to review and vet possible ARP fund use options.
I think we will have to appointing you and me.
And appointing the chair and vice chair, Chair Newman, Chair Vice Chairman Jones to the committee and Lisa Hancock as the interim town manager.
Lou will second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Lou?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Kurt?
Hi.
Hi.
Brenda?
Hi.
Eve?
Hi.
I'm an eye, so that's unanimous. Thank you very much. Set up a initial meeting. Okay, that gets us to ten. Report to the town manager. Take your time.
First one, don't mess up.
I really don't have a heck of a lot to offer, except my first couple of days.
I was gonna say, the first two days.
Been very interesting with citizen complaints and employee concerns that we're dealing with and just trying to get acclimated. I'm also in the interim, still trying to manage some of the finance department issues, but we have gone out to posted an advertisement to see if we could get an interim finance director because it does get challenging trying to do both. The other information that I have for you, I know you, and I don't know if you want me to continue with doing this, but I have an update on who is doing the boards and commissions, what types of meetings. Would you like me to share that with you?
Sure.
Okay. In-person meetings, the WPCA and the Veterans Recognition Committee. All remote meetings is the Birch Grove Primary School Building Committee, the Commission on People with Disabilities, Conservation Commission, Library Advisory Board, Parks and Recreation Board, and the Talon Water Commission. Hybrid meetings in addition to the town council. You have the Board of Education, the Economic Development Commission, Planning and Zoning Commission, and Zoning Board of Appeals. And that is all I have regarding that.
Thank you. That's useful. Perfect.
Bring the record, getting it, it straight, just to make sure, because as I go through the charter and everything, if any counselors have any questions of any of the staff, I'd appreciate it if it could just come through me first and then I can get it to the right person, either have them speak with you or get the answer back to you. But I think it's best that way because it helps me to keep involved of what your concerns are and what your questions may be, and, and I can try to get you the right answers. So I'd appreciate.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. That gets us to eleven, adoption of minutes.
Scroll back to the top. Steve Jones, there was a motion to adopt the minutes as laid out for July twenty seventh. Hybrid special, hybrid regular, as well as the August fourth hybrid executive and hybrid special meetings.
Any discussion? Those in favor? Lou?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Kurt?
Hi.
Hi.
Deb? Hi.
Hi.
I'm an eye, that's unanimous. Thank you very much. To twelve, correspondence to council.
Hi, this is Brenda Flucy here. We received a, a number of emails, so let me go through the list. A resident writing in about a social media dialogue and is requesting responses from various groups. A resident wrote in about his most social media dialogue and request for a citation for a community club. We received some well-testing results from a resident. We received an email asking for masks to be mandated, another for, for masks to be optional. We had a resident request, we do not use a search consultant for the town manager. We had another resident ask us to say no to masks and passports. We had a resident send in information about pesticides. We had another resident write in about a social media dialogue and our statement on racism. We had another resident write in about our social, a social media dialogue and a request for a proclamation. We had a request that the town manager's search be done by a committee of resident volunteers. And then we had another resident write in and send some information about fossil fuels. Thank you.
Thank you. That gets to thirteen, chairperson's report. I don't have a whole lot tonight. I just wanted to apologize for abruptly canceling the chair hour on Thursday. I had a family emergency come up that I had to attend to, so I wasn't able to meet it. But I would encourage anybody, if you have any questions for me or would like to have an informal chat as we do in chair hour, please reach out and I can make time to meet you for a cup of tea or a slice of pizza. Then that gets us to fourteen, communications and petitions from councilpersons. Doesn't anybody have anything for me tonight? Nope. Okay, that gets us to fifteen. Public lists of participation on any subject within the jurisdiction of the town council with a three-minute limit. If you are on the computer or a device, please raise your hand. If you're on the phone, it is star nine. If I call and you state your name and address for the record. Anybody, anybody?
There's one, Sophia Johnson.
Sophia, nice to see you.
Hello.
Hello.
So nice to see our town council in chambers. It's what I'm used to, and it's, it seems that things are working okay outside of the audio. But I just wanted to let the town council know that I was one of the residents, I'm Sophia Johnson, forty eight Crystal Lake Road, that sent in a letter regarding the correspondence, for correspondence to council, and I'm just going to be reading my letter in, that it should be obvious to most Tallanders that a person volunteered to coach a diverse and inclusive youth football league should have nothing but good intentions. They are there to do no harm and are teaching our children how to be together for Tallin. Representing our town is athletes and cheerleaders. Everything about those coaches, their race, their political opinions, and their moral compass is represented through their choice to step up and devote their time to enrich our youth. Judging these coaches based on their clothing is irresponsible, especially if you're assuming that their choice of clothing is deliberate or in vain. Does waving a pride flag make you gay? Does wearing a Black Lives Matter shirt make you black? Does wearing a patriotic shirt highlighting our Independence Day make you a white nationalist? Does brandishing any of these automatically make you a good or bad person? These symbols mean nothing in the content of the beholder's character, and it's not, and, and just indicate whether or not they're a good person. The content of the malign football coach's character is an open-minded, caring, and giving person. He'll give you the shirt off his back, even the one in question, which I have on today. If you ask him because you need it. Passing judgment and publicly shaming this Tallander is absolutely wrong. And as a matter of fact, it was my request for the service, the many years of service, I learned that the Tallin youth football and cheerleading has been for half a century in Tallin. And I can only, and I've only heard positive things about the young men and women that have come from this. And I think that it's important for Tallin to maintain and, and support Tallin organizations that have our youth doing positive things instead of on the street breaking in cars. So I'm humbly submitting my public request for a citation to be awarded from the town council to acknowledge the incredible achievements of the Tallin youth football cheerleading coaches, the organization itself, the parents and the participants in the community that support this organization, and that we continue to see for the amazing contribution that it is in our community so that we can ensure that more kids will get involved and do things that are positive in representing Tallin. Thank you.
You, Sophia? Anybody else? All right, then.
Seeing no other public comments, Steve Jones, I'd make a motion to adjourn at eight oh two P M.
Brenda Flucy, I second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Lou?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Kurt?
Hi.
Hi.
Brenda?
Hi.
Eve?
Hi.
I'm an eye, that is unanimous. Thank you very much. Everybody, have a wonderful night.